So let's get started. We are starting our board work session at 6:55 PM. In the ten, director Saat, Dankers, Nelson, Daniels, and Mel Pakem, Director Loma and Director Jorgensen are excused. We also have Superintendent Gaul and several of his administrative team joining us. And the first item on the agenda is PeopleSoft Assessment. And this is providing the audit that was conducted on PeopleSoft and the recommendation that's coming in front of the board based on that audit. Over to you Superintendent Gaul.
I'll put it right over to John because I know we're behind and you've all read the briefs hopefully so we're off and running.
I'll jump right in. Good evening Board. As you can see, we've got a team of folks here to support and answer any questions as we review the findings and recommendations from the PeopleSoft Assessment. Please feel free to ask any questions as we go through the presentation. And we'll, of course, at the end, we can also answer any questions. PeopleSoft plays a critical role in delivering vital business services across District 11. And PeopleSoft is an ERP system. ERP is an acronym for Enterprise Resource Planning, which essentially is an integrated system that supports automation and business processes for many large organizations, including finance, human resources, procurement, supply chain, and more. District 11's PeopleSoft system primarily encompasses human resources and finance. And so, over the span of more than two decades, District 11 has maintained consistent business processes in PeopleSoft. What we haven't done is made major investments in adapting to emerging industry standards and best practices. So as a result, inefficiencies and operational challenges have accumulated over that 25 years roughly. And so, this has led to end-user frustration and difficulty using PeopleSoft effectively. And so, we're really at a critical crossroads with PeopleSoft and we have a tremendous opportunity to modernize our back-office capabilities, including the consideration of a new modern ERP solution. But really, we're here tonight to talk about the alternative of reinvesting in PeopleSoft primarily and sharing the findings and recommendations. And so, we utilized vacancy request funding from last year to engage a company called Spear MC Consulting to review our use of PeopleSoft and all of the supporting business practices that go along with it. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Hunt, who leads our PeopleSoft team, and he'll share the findings and recommendations from Spear MC. And maybe more importantly, some considerations for potentially selecting a new ERP solution.
Well, thank you, John, and then thank you, Board, for inviting us here and allowing us to give you the summary of the findings for Spear MC. So with your support, we engaged with Spear MC and they did a very thorough evaluation over a period of weeks of our finance and HR systems. They kind of did a top-down evaluation of our system. They looked at the product itself, the application, the technology, the configuration. They looked at the functionality it provides. They looked at our business process readiness. What are our business processes? Are they up to date? Do they follow best practices and industry standards? What's our training like? Have we been kept up on training? So they did kind of a full spectrum of assessment of the functionality, capabilities of our system, and really the functioning of our staff and our business processes. So they did give us an estimate and some recommendations for, as John mentioned, there was two options, right? There was kind of rebuild, right, or replace. And so, they were in the business of initially saying, hey, here's what you can do if you want to reinvest and rebuild the system and bring it up to modern standards. So that was some of the input that Spear MC gave us. And they, in a way, did provide some information about, well, if you really want to modernize this system, here's some other things you may want to think about. And that does involve some other modules and some additional licensing costs. They did also recommend and basically give us some guidance on moving to another system, right? Moving off of PeopleSoft to another system, for instance, a cloud-based ERP system rather than the on-premise system we have now. So they did give input on that as well. That will be the next slide. Any questions? Summary of the findings, these are very high-level. They actually gave us some very detailed documentation, multiple pages of information, very detailed Excel spreadsheets with the findings. Those have ventured with our HR and finance teams and you've had a chance to sit down with them and review those findings. And so, in general, what they have found, and you can see these on the slides. I'm not going to read every bullet, but there are some business practices that they looked at and said, oh, you have some variances in your budget, right? The actual budgets, and there are some problems with monthly closeout, some automation issues, right? There's some improvements we can make in some of the modules and so on. So you can see from this slide that at a high level, they did identify some big opportunities, right, for us to improve that system. Next slide. I'm going to focus in on both the finance and the HR aspects of this a little bit. And so, in finance, they basically looked at some short-term recommendations. And we reviewed these with the groups and I think that some of these may be appropriate and some of them may not. I think we're still looking at this and evaluating some of those short-term recommendations and the medium terms as well. So these are the, you know, the quick wins and maybe one to four months out for the medium term. And they did highlight some long terms, like these would make basically the year or so to implement. And what I, I'm not going to go through every one of these bullets, but you can see there are some configuration things in there. There are some training things in there. There are some report issues in here that they think we can address. And you're going to see the word, words, purchase and implement in here as well. So there are multiple instances where they say, purchase this or implement this. And so, part of the recommendations were if you really want to uplift this system and modernize this system, here's our recommendations for doing so. And when you look at this slide and these recommendations and thinking behind that, there's another really comprehensive set of documents with very detailed recommendations. I guess the point I want to make is there's a lot of work involved in uplifting this system. We can do it, but it's an effort, okay? If there's any specific questions on any of those items, I have my team here, so we've got Scott over there and Dana and Jeremiah, who are happy to answer any specific items in that bulleted list that you may have questions about.
Do you want to open it up for questions, right?
Absolutely, sir, yes.
Who do you have any questions on the short-term, medium-term, and the long-term summary of recommendations? Could you introduce yourselves going around and your title?
So I'm Scott Olson and I am with Digital Solutions. We support PeopleSoft findings.
Jeremiah?
Jeremiah Johnson. I am the PeopleSoft Administrator for District 11.
Dana Hutchins, I do PeopleSoft programming for HR and I back up Jeremiah for system administration. And I think I've been here the longest, I've the PeopleSoft team, so.
And there's one member of my team that can't be here. She just had a lady thing surgery today, so that's Jennifer and Mel Fant and she's not here today.
She supports finance.
She's probably listening in.
Yeah, she supports finance as well.
And I certainly don't portray myself as an ERP expert, but the things that I heard when we went through the detailed review was, it's been 20-plus years since we've made a significant investment in this platform that serves the most two critical components of what we are able to do for our staff. Hire them and pay them appropriately. As an example, we did extra training in September and we, at this table, are so trained to the challenges in PeopleSoft that we thought it was fair to say, training in September will be paid to you in November. That's just not what we want for our staff. We want our staff to be trained in September and hopefully, particularly if the training happens before, say, the 27th or 28th, to see that in their pay at the end of that month. Having the gap of weeks, if not months, because of the system limitations, which have created all the right Band-Aids. Just now, we want to ask the question, is it time for us to go to an RFP to determine what is the cost of us replacing? Because we have an estimated cost of repairing. But you're sitting there right now with your 20-year-old car and they say you need a new engine, which means you need a new transmission, which means you probably need a new suspension as well as new tires. And so, do you want to put that money of a new car into an old car? We believe in RFP, of which we would expect PeopleSoft to be a viable competitor, but really believe that maybe even the PeopleSoft upgrade answer is just a brand-new implementation of PeopleSoft. So again, if we traded all our iPhones for Androids, we could train ourselves to do it. We think it's time, particularly with vacancy fund money that we will be reviewing at mid-year, to chunk out some money to make sure that this isn't restrictive for us going future. I would like to think this is the last year that we have significant money generated from vacancies. I can't predict the future. I just know that what's on the table now means I think it's time for the Board to give us a thumbs up to go for an RFP. When we asked this question, and we did the same thing you did, Dr. Mel Pakem, by asking, Jeremiah introduced his team and they all said they think we should go for an RFP. So the very people who work with PeopleSoft say, how did you say it? Software developers want to have the best software, would you say?
It's a technical support professionals like products that don't break.
Right, right. And so, the people that work with it every day are telling us, and certainly our end-users, between Brandon's team and Phoebe's team, are just constantly trying to fix the thing that doesn't work. And it's not our people. And we've been able to get our principals to see that. Principals are no longer complaining, HR didn't. Now it's, why do we have a system that gives training that doesn't pay until November? Because what we, the way it has been is they just think that we're not paying people. No, it's not that. It's a limitation. We're locked out how many weeks? Two weeks out of every four. Weeks out of every four. I'll pause there and...
Well, you cut right to the chaser, which is great. There's a couple more slides if you want to look at them and we can flip to those pretty easily.
Are there any questions on this slide? We heard Superintendent Gaul and this looks like it's recommendation for existing PeopleSoft.
This is what came out of the consultancy.
Yep.
And we were so concerned at the level of implementations and upgrades and the amount of time that that would take, then the question came from our IT team that says, why don't we just pursue and see what the alternative is to just rebuild?
And that's not just, like, that's just finance.
That's the last one.
There's another slide for HR as well, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
Do we have any kind of like financial breakdown on how much this is going to?
Yep.
We do. Our final slide gives kind of a comparison between uplift and reinvesting in PeopleSoft and the consideration of a new solution. Although we don't have the detailed numbers yet, we've done some market research and have a pretty strong idea of what it will cost.
There are no questions. Please continue with the presentation.
So now we're on the HR findings, right? So we already highlighted, for instance, that two-week pay lockout. We've already highlighted some other pay issues and gaps in communication that we have to kind of slow things down. And then we know that the system is not optimized in terms of functionality and ease of use, right? We see those every day and we do those comments every day. So with that summary of the gaps that the vendor found, let's jump to their specific findings and recommendations. And you will see there once again, a list of short, medium, and long-term fixes and in every one of those sentences and behind every one of those blocks of information for more detail and more tasks to do. So there's a lot of effort to bring this 1998. At that time, it was a Cadillac. It ran great, it ran on all eight cylinders. It was the best of everything, but, you know, 25 years later, we're patching it up and there's a lot of patchwork to do on this 1998 Cadillac to get that up to current standards. And even then, we're not sure we're going to have, you know, a best-in-class Cadillac that we can make the most of and add efficiencies to our operations. So once again, I'm not going to go through all those training needs are part of that. Some report considerations. Once again, there are some recommendations to implement and purchase other additional modules, okay? And although as a team, and I say that as, you know, the HR and finance end of those, I don't think we agree that we need all of these modules. But as you'll see from our final slide, there is probably one module that we're going to recommend that based upon Spear MC's recommendations and our research. It may make sense if we keep this current system. One module may make sense to look into purchasing and implementing. So here's some lessons that we've learned in the D-11 team and that's, you know, a year ago at this time, if you would have asked us like, where are you at? Do you think you can fix PeopleSoft? Or would you like to purchase a new system? I think we would have mixed responses across the district, but especially in my group and the technology end of things, I think we would say, you know what, we can fix this. We've had it for X number of years. We know the system and we can fix it. With Spear MC's findings and some of the detail they provided, with some of the market research we've done since then, we're of a different mindset, as Mr. Gaul said, right? We understand now that we do have an older system that sure, we can keep patching up and we can keep running, right? But it is always going to be an older system, right? So, and I think that HR and finance, and I won't speak directly for you guys because you're in the room, but I think we're all on board with that. So we believe that it is time to look for a new upgraded, modern ERP system that will properly serve our stakeholders, both internal and those external stakeholders that do the systems as well. We know that any change, whether we keep our current system or whether we do a new one, right? We've had this system for 25 years and we have a lot of processes developed over that time that need to be changed. It's going to be a big lift. It's going to be a lot of change. So we're going to need some really robust change management along the way. Understand that. We're going to need a commitment, right, to both initial and ongoing training, both for our end-users and for our technical score and for our functional deeds in the HR and the finance area. So we hope to garner support for that training and ongoing professional development for our technical staff and our support professionals along the way. And then we're going to promote some internal process improvements. And some of those, we've already highlighted. Spear MC highlighted those, but we know that we can do better with our pay cycles, with position control, with a number of other things in terms of reconciling budgets, end-of-year processes, end-of-month processes, et cetera. And then, what of Spear's recommendations? I think the thing that's already happening is that we're engaging with our departments and our principals at a much greater level. So Spear MC recognized that. I think we're already doing that and we'll keep that going because I think that engagement at that level is really critical to the success of keeping with PeopleSoft or moving to a new system. Right. And for follow-up and ongoing efforts, we are having ongoing discussions with HR and finance groups about which one of these short, medium recommendations makes sense to do. The consensus is that we can do some of them and it may make sense to do some, but not all, okay? In terms of those long-term recommendations, we'd like to hold off on those. They do come at a cost in terms of additional licensing because they may require purchasing and implementing other functionality. And they do require some expertise, right? Bringing in some consultants to help us do some very long-term fixes. So there are some other considerations with bringing these long-term changes in. So we'd like to hold off on those pending your decisions on moving forward. Ongoing training needs is always one of those things we're addressing. We recognized that early on, that we needed more training in PeopleSoft. We know that we're going to need continued training in PeopleSoft or whatever system we need we go to. There is a product out that we discovered through this evaluation with Spear, Spear MC, called Oracle Guided Learning. And our impressions of that tool is that it will enhance our work processes, continuity in our workforce. For instance, when somebody new comes into HR or finance, right? That Oracle Guided Learning is a scaffold. It's now a template for their learning and for them understanding the business processes and helping them through the systems. And it will also guide, if we move to a new system, right? Much of the discussions around what do we want this new system to do and what processes will we use in that new system. So there's multiple advantages that Oracle Guided Learning. So we don't anticipate maybe keeping that forever, but definitely keeping that until or unless we get a new ERP. There's ongoing market research. So my team over here has been talking to other school districts, to vendors. And so, we have some preliminary information, as John said. Oracle Cloud is one of those that we have some information from. Skyward, and by the way, Oracle Cloud, several districts in Colorado have already moved to that, like Cherry Creek, Francis has moved to that. Aurora is on Oracle Cloud. Other districts are considering it. These are pretty big districts, right? Skyward is a relatively new player in Colorado. The D-49 is implementing that right now. Better than mostly do that implementation, Scott Skyward. You're familiar with Power School? Have you seen that before and heard that name before? They do have an ERP system. We have not looked at it in any detail and in depth, but we know it's out there. They see some advantages to it, integrated with the other practical applications, but we have to do a lot more market research and investigation on that. Frontline is another one that we know is being used in Colorado, but I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, frontline has basically told us that they no longer provide services in Colorado.
The same with Workday. They said they don't work with K-12 anymore.
Yeah, D-20 is using Workdays, but Workdays does no longer provide services for K-12 public school districts.
Says so much, doesn't it?
It sounds a little interesting, doesn't it? Yeah, yeah. In terms of our future opportunities, I think we have all hands in with HR, finance, and the tech teams. And really, I think our end-users in general, that it is time to look into a new system and to commit to an RFP, a request for proposals for a new ERP. We went, we came to you last year with a budget, a mid-year budget of $5 million for this very effort. And John over here has submitted that again as a mid-year budget request for that same RFP process. So in terms of the license, I'm going to give you some numbers here, but we're going to summarize this on the next slide. But in terms of, you know, the licensing right now that we pay, recurring annual licensing for PeopleSoft, we anticipate in '24, '25, it will be about $400,000 with the annual 8% increase that they charge us in our licensing. And so, every year, that will go up another 5% to 8%, depending on what Oracle charges us. We do know that licensing, there's a range from our early market research. At the low end, it's around $230,000 annual licensing for the same functionality that we have right now. At the high end, we anticipate maybe $70,000 a year for licensing. So there's a range. You don't know which one of those products will, you know, serve our needs. So that's why I'm putting the range in there. In terms of implementation, those numbers, 4 to 8 million, might sound a little bit high to you, all right? I can tell you that Cherry Creek spent $12 million on their implementation of Oracle Cloud, right? So those numbers are actually quite a bit lower than what Cherry Creek did for an equivalent implementation. We do know that some other vendors are much below that. So we know that some other vendors could be in the range of maybe a million and a half to 2 million. But we also have to consider that these three staff in this room and the one that's not here, the four staff members that we have, you know, they will have to keep our current systems running. They won't have full-time to commit to implementation. So we'll have to augment that with some other professional staff, either from the vendors or through temp employees. So we know that we're going to have to augment that implementation cost with some other staff to make this work and to keep our other systems running at the same time.
Then just say that HR and finance are in a similar position in that they are, you know, they're going to have to keep PeopleSoft payroll running and onboarding and doing the work that they currently do in PeopleSoft while we're implementing. And that's where that staff augmentation, where the vendor will bring in resources to help us. Obviously, we want our teams to be heavily involved in the implementation, but they can't just drop what they're currently doing and go full-time into the implementation. And so, that's really one of the big drivers of the implementation cost is the extra staffing that you need to move that ahead and ask the critical questions. What do we want the process to be? Not replicate what it currently is, but what could it be? And what does it look like if it's as efficient as we could possibly dream that it could be?
Yep, and then we set aside, obviously, there's some training cost every time you do an implementation. Or if we even keep our existing system, we know that there's going to have to be some pretty robust refresher training. So there's going to be training cost no matter which way we go. And if we implement a new ERP, the consensus from our market research and from talking to other districts is that's going to be a one- to two-year project after the RFP is decided. And now the slide that you've all been waiting for. This is the cost comparison of rebuilding, reinvesting in our current system or replacing that and moving to a new ERP. In terms of licensing, I kind of already gave you that kind of high-level view of that. You'll notice that if we keep our current system, we are recommending that Oracle Guided Learning as part of our annual recurring costs. And I mentioned earlier that there is one module that we think, if any of those recommendations from Spear MC makes sense to us, it's probably this time and labor module. We've looked at that in the past and I wasn't here at the time or in this department at the time, but it was decided against that. But Spear MC, basically, in many of the conversations, because many of our groups said, you know what, you could really enhance your efficiencies in the work you do and you could eliminate many of the customizations that, you know, the team here has to support by using this time and labor module. So it's pricey, right? Those estimated costs is $220,000. So you can see annual licensing would bump up if we really wanted to do the right thing with our existing system and get that up to specs, okay? New ERP, we already talked about that. It's a low end of $230,000 to the high end $700,000. The kind of hidden cost in all that is hosting. That low-end cost there of $230,000 implies that we would host that system, right? If we wanted to vendor to host that system, you can tack on another $100,000 or so, okay? So we could potentially save some money if we had a vendor that allowed us to self-host at a discount. It does require a little bit more work from my team, but that's the move we're doing now.
Say that again. Say that again. In-house data center, if the vendor hosted it, it's $100,000.
Yeah. So we have our own data center.
Right.
We have our own servers. We have all our own test environments and train environments, et cetera. So we maintain that. We update that, right? And we, if we have a vendor do that for us in the cloud instead of on-premise, typically, that's $100,000 upcharge from the vendor.
That's a manual cost.
Yes.
But what's not calculated there is what is our sunk cost to not being cloud-based as a district?
Well, that was my next question.
Right. Why do we have a data center? When I don't have a data center on my phone, everything goes to the cloud, connects to my personal computer at home. Like, these are conversations we would want to have. Do we want to go? Because we actually made the local decision for Power School, right? But they had originally, maybe for money or for whatever reason, were pitching cloud-based.
No, we're actually primarily in the cloud with Power School, except for the special programs.
Gotcha.
Due to some limitations of what Power School could provide and some of the charges that they were going to, that it was going to cost us, we made the decision during the implementation to take that one piece and bring it in-house. And that's actually what generated that partnership that we announced a couple of months ago at this point. We did such a good job at implementing that. Now Power School wants, is leveraging our intellectual property and is reselling that in the state of Colorado. So it's a tricky thing.
So how many people would be impacted if we went to a vendor-hosted data center?
Which type of people are you talking about? Our end-users or our team here?
Your team here.
Yeah, we've had that conversation with the vendors. And the vendors that we've talked to said, well, you guys, you only have four people right now. That's a pretty, you know, lean team that you have. And if we were to move to a new system, what they would basically say is that even though Jeremiah right now is a system admin and his duties would change, you would still need him because the vendor still rolls out updates and there's testing in their configuration and there is training that we have to do. So the team would stay the same. Their tasks would change.
The job description would be updated and Jeremiah would facilitate testing and updating whatever guided learning or whatever the selected vendor has in terms of keeping your online training up to speed, things like that. So really, it's just a matter of changing the job of what they do on a day-to-day basis more than having savings in terms of FTE.
Well, it would be another $100,000 annually.
That's right.
And if we didn't do that, then their workload would double because now they've got two things that they've got to take care of. Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, implementation. You noticed that we set roughly a half a million dollars aside because if we really want to upgrade the system, we're going to need some assistance from Spear MC. We're going to need some training supports and some consultants to come on-site and help us configure the system and help us kind of trim down some of these customizations that we have, maybe implement that time and labor module. So we said, we believe that we can do that with about a half a million dollar bringing in the right consultants for a year period of time.
It's basically one-man year of consulting services is what that $520,000 represents.
On the ERP solution side of it, we've already talked about that 5 million rough estimate, right? That's kind of a placeholder amount. Our intention is to do really thorough market research, really to get some better numbers for you. And then when the time comes, if you decide that it is time to do an ERP, an RFP for an ERP, we can actually refine that number and get closer to the actual targeted amount. So we think that's a big placeholder, especially based upon what other districts have told us their implementation of cloud systems, ERP systems have been. It could be a little higher. Probably going to be lower depending what system we go with.
So there'll be multiple gates where the Board would approve. So if we get a thumbs up like, yes, we agree you should pursue an RFP or no, we think you should... So if we get a thumbs up like, yes, we agree you should pursue an RFP, or no, we think you should reinvest in PeopleSoft. If you say, let's start investigating it, there'll be the mid-year budget request for five million dollar placeholder. That enables us to do an RFP, we could probably release that early next year and have a selection that would coincide with budget adoption for twenty four, twenty five.
And John, can you explain that, that the RFP doesn't cost us any money? We just can't do the RFP without saying we've place-held the money.
Right.
Can you just give clarity there?
The five million is a realistic budget, given our market research. And so our procurement code requires that you have funding before you do an RFP because you can't do an award without funding. And so as that would progress, perhaps we would align it very nicely with our next year budget adoption. And then we would get the, the implementation budget would either increase or decrease, depending on what we found out from the actual vendor costs, their best and final offers, if you will. And then that would be the final gate that we would go through before we would actually engage with the vendor and start the project.
So what I just heard is that we need to set aside the five million in order to issue this RFP, ERP?
I, I would call it just protect the five million. And then if the RFP comes in and we don't like any of the vendors, then reallocate that at end-of-year budget to whatever other we prioritize with mid-year budget.
Yes.
Right, so it's, we could keep it there in a space just to go through the process to see. We don't know, we, I appreciate the market research that's been done, but we just think that while we have the minute and while we have the five million, we should get the actual facts to the table and let vendors come in here and tell us what that cost is. We have a lot of scars from Power School, but as somebody who came in at the back end of that, I can't imagine being a school district in America now that doesn't have Power School. So now that I'm living the PeopleSoft world and our team does a great job in managing that, I can't imagine being a new employee and then getting the answers that we give people, which is like, well, we're locked out for two weeks, or, well, you know, what we do in HR doesn't match the way finance does this. And that's our lived experience, but our employees, they're expecting more. And, and you get it anecdotally when you hear about the challenges that we still have. When somebody didn't get a job here, they say, well, it took District eleven longer. It's not because the HR team isn't working as fast and hard as they can. It's their limitations. As, as another anecdote, I, I rely on IT to get me the information. This year, I obligated to seeing all new teaching teachers that we hired on the, on the new salary compensation in the first sixty days. I have to go to Tom and team to sort and filter that. I can't get Phoebe's team to just go into Windows-based program, teacher hired in last ninety days with less than five years' teaching experience, sort and define by location. We all expect to be able to do that on our handheld all day long. The way we have PeopleSoft working, it doesn't work that way. I need an IT expert to tell me who's a new teacher in the system. That, that can't be. So now when we get to a harder question of, we believe that the highest quality instruction comes from teachers with the following majors and minors, delivered from this higher institution with this number of years of experience. Tom could probably write that code, but boy, the system's going to crash when we try and throw four different filters in it. Where, again, in a, I don't call it Windows-based because I'm not the expert, but a modern ERP, we'd be able to slice and dice data all day long, which would be an advantage for us to have stronger hiring strategies and/or for us to be able to match to what schools tell us they need in their buildings. I'm getting a lot of head nodding, right people?
Are we done, are we done with the presentation? Is that the end of the presentation?
Yeah, and then the total cost, the bottom line, those are the numbers of, for the rebuild versus the replays.
So the guidance superintendent called right now from the board that you would like us go with the left column or the right column before we go on with further discussion?
I, I don't think I'm asking you to evaluate the left column. I think I'm asking you for a thumbs up to give us the ability to go explore the right column and then you'll have a decision point of, we'll always hold the left column and continue to update it. This is your least expensive, if you're just worried about money, and then this is what you get if you want to go with what an RFP would be suggested on.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's anecdotal too when the bond doesn't pass because people don't understand that that includes all of this too. Because this is what it takes to get a hundred and fifty-year-old system up to par. And because we've been doing something for twenty-five, thirty years, we still have to make sure that they talk to each other and you have to have the hardware in order to hold all of it. And then you need the plate, I don't know how it doesn't get understood. The more we delay, the more expensive it's going to get. And ta-da, here it is. And now we're going to hopefully understand the importance of why we ask. And, you know, it, I mean, like, it's a how much of the hardware is updated to hold this new package? And have the old system communicate with the new system? Where I know with Power School, like you said, there were certain things that software couldn't do because we had specialized it so much. What does that look like with this new system? How much specializing are you going to have to do for a hundred and fifty years? Even though this is the Cadillac, is that the top car now or is it Tesla? What is, okay, do you, do you understand where it's?
It was a nineteen ninety-eight Cadillac, that's, yeah, I know where it is.
Yeah, right, like, what, what's the most, because it could be a Tesla, Maybach, what? Where, where are we? Because it is always how our team is going to make them speak to each other so we can get the results that we need moving forward. And yes, it's going to cost a lot of money, a lot of man-hours too, for you to do this. Along with the upgrade and, does this include cybersecurity and trying to make sure that stays safe? Does this include all of?
If, if the vendor hosts it, right, they would provide the security. If we hosted, it would be under our security, yep.
And do we, okay, can I ask another question? Um, trying to formulate it in the right way. So we will be able to take care of finance, HR, as well as all of the reports that everybody wants. And making sure that we find the top five powerful cars. Like, again, Maybach, Tesla, whoever is that, we're getting those people to come to us and say this is what it's going to cost.
And, and, and just to, to frame this, we are not looking at some of the really big vendors necessarily.
Okay.
We're looking at the ones that serve K twelve public school districts the best.
Okay.
That's where we're focusing our attention.
That's a whole different conversation if we go for the top five parts, right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's a different package, okay? So we're just looking at middle of the road, what would get us through fifty years? Or will, I mean, can it?
That's a good question, I hope I can anticipate how long the vendors will be around, but
Right.
Yeah, I, I think it's safe to say that this is a multiple-decade investment.
That's good, right? Because we're trying to get into the, what, twenty-first century?
Trying to get there.
We're trying to get there, okay. Do we get a chance to see the vendors? Am I asking too many questions without raising my hand? Go just check it out.
As long as you have the floor, please continue with the conversation.
So yes, as part of the RFP process, we always present to the board sort of who responded to the RFP, who our finalists were, what the logic behind the recommendations are, which vendor cost the most, had the best features. It all comes down to which vendor matches our requirements and has the best solution for us. And so all of, all of those details would be shared with the board as part of that RFP process.
It's time, I know it's time, I'm just like, I just hope the community understands this is, this is part of why we can't delay and key mission things back. Technology is ahead of us and we have to get on board to also take care of teachers, hires, fires, all of the stuff in between and getting you support for what it's going to take to get it all ready. So, okay, that's, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Back to her.
Um, so a question, there were those short-term recommendations, the like one month, couple of months, four months. And as we look at a possible new ERP solution of twelve to twenty-four months, are you thinking of investing in some of that training in the short term and some of the short-term solutions?
Yes, absolutely.
Right.
We know that we have to keep our existing system working.
Right.
We have to modernize and do the best we can and update our processes and our training while we do the RFP and during the implementation of that system. So we've continued work to do, so we can't stop here and let the system stagnate any more than it already is, in my opinion.
Well, and my, as I look at those and I think of the headaches that you're already facing for finance and HR and anything we can do to make the next year or two, while something new is brought in, make that easier on you all, that seems wise, so I appreciate that.
I'm glad you recognize that HR and finance are headaches to us, I appreciate that.
No, no, that's what I said, Tom! I appreciate the humor, I am, thank you.
Back to back.
Would you go back again, you didn't even address this, but I, I'm still trying to figure it out. You wanted to keep the time and labor module the same?
We do not have the time and labor module now. That was one of the recommendations that Spear MC had that said, if you did this, it would really help your business processes. We may even be able to eliminate some applications that we currently have that are kind of standalone, right? And, 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 and it would give us the ability to reduce some of our customizations. We have a lot of customizations to do processes in that time and labor module. And their opinion would help us reduce a lot of those customizations. And those customizations, by the way, are one of the challenges we have for the implementation. That's, that's a big challenge.
The other way of looking, other way of looking at that, that is the expertise of the team who's able to make those customizations in order to get the work done.
Yeah.
Um, so in keeping or in implementing that time and, and labor module, will that translate, is that something that happened now under the current system that we're using or is that something?
It would, it would have to be an additional purchase of a module, have to go through an implementation, right? So there would be some of that involved. I don't know how long that, do you have any idea how long that implementation would take?
No, time, we didn't ask, but it would be over six months, a year.
Now, in, in the past, we've, I, I mentioned that we had looked at time and labor in the past and I believe that it was like, in addition to time and labor, you're going to have to hire several other people to maintain that module. We don't think that's the case.
They did not as much now, but they also, another reason they didn't want it was, they said the front end was too difficult for the users. And we've heard that through Grant's module that they recommended it, it was too difficult for the users to use and too cumbersome and they don't, they don't like that.
So you don't want to use it?
Well, Spear MC recommended it. I think the jury's still out if we want to move that direction.
Yeah, we have to look at it.
Yeah.
If the board supports moving forward with an RFP, we would definitely put that component on hold.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because the new solution would have its own version of a time and attendance module that hopefully would meet all of our needs and provide some improvements, potentially eliminate Time Clock Plus, Smart Find Express, right? We have other systems that we've cobbled together and integrated with PeopleSoft to a certain degree that, that we use. Time and labor, if you reinvest into PeopleSoft, would have made a lot of sense to try and rectify that, eliminate some of those systems, create some savings and have some more efficiencies. We think there are probably some better solutions out there that we should take a look at.
So during the implementation phase, looking at HR and finance and smooth lining the process to hire new people, are we looking at a year to straighten that out, if we do go with another system?
What was your timeframe for Power School? You did eighteen months, twenty, twenty-four months, what was your?
It was one year.
What was it?
That was actually one year.
Yeah.
So we're, we'll struggle along for another year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we could choose to put, so you'd probably either pick HR or finance as the early adopter of a new solution and perhaps HR would be the first to say, we'd like to go first because we're also working with all of you right now and we have other initiatives within the finance world that might make HR go first. And so perhaps we could provide somebody in that eight to twelve-month range. Certainly, onboarding is, is a big area for improvement for us. I think the HR team, when we were reviewing findings, talked about twenty-three touchpoints from hiring requisition to final recommendation for hire. Twenty-three touchpoints, that's, dare I say, way too many. And so we hope to create a lot of efficiencies specifically in that area and make it a lot more user-friendly for the person applying. Go, I have a LinkedIn profile, point to that, import that information, rather than our current processes, pages and pages of data entry for, for the applicant, which is painful when they perhaps apply to another district that has a more modern system that can ingest their resume and populate all those fields and then it's just a few clicks to apply.
So if we, do we have a timeline? If I'm going forward, say that the board goes ahead and says, yes, we're going to look at the RFPs and we're going to award one, would, would HR get any relief in the next hiring cycle in the spring?
I don't think you would have a new RFP in place, but I do think that we can adopt a couple of the short-term fixes, particularly lean them on the HR side to lean some of those twenty-three touchpoints, which will actually move people in the right direction. The time that this is here now is we're getting ready to come mid-year budgets for our review to then bring for what we need the board's decision on. So we need to know if we need to take a big chunk of that money and earmark it towards this RFP. And, and, and as Director Daniel said, every day delayed is just another day that either costs increase or we're still talking about, D twenty, D forty-nine are hiring faster. We moved, what we did last year was we moved our own timeline up, but the time it takes to hire still takes longer than neighboring systems.
I, I do want to say, it doesn't matter if we stay on PeopleSoft to go to something new. Nothing will get better unless we change our processes. And then we have to have buy-in from the people here. Because when we got TCP, we were going to do things the TCP way. And within two months, principals and people started to complain and we had to customize to make it work for the principals to make it easier. And that doesn't make it easier, that makes it harder in the long run. So those things need to be, that needs to be better.
I, I think Tom could maybe summarize the way Power School has changed the way we think about secondary technology supports. Like, Power School's become the center of our architecture for how we do things on student information and grading and attendance. And so a new ERP would force our hand to no longer say, this process drives. Because the new ERP is a different architecture. And again, if I use that Android and Apple, we need our people to learn a new system. It'll force us to train. And will we have some customizations? Probably, I think it's impossible to think a school district wouldn't. But I do think it would free us from a lot of the things right now that, again, as still the new guy, we do because we've always done. Right?
As an example, like Mr. Gall said, in, in our old SIS and Q, any teacher, every teacher could, for any class, come up with their own grade scale. It was the wild, wild west, we had hundreds of grade scales. When Power School came on, that was no longer an option. It was a standardized set of grade scales, right? So now everybody is consistent in using very similar grade scales.
And you probably got a hundred emails complaining about that.
Yes.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Director Nelson, you haven't asked any, do you have any?
No, let's do it. Like, I, I've heard this is a problem since I've been elected and have had lots of side conversations with multiple players. And you are the ones working with this, this is your recommendation. You are the ones that are going to have to deal with the transition and you're still saying we need to do it. So, all right, let's do it.
Okay, Director Dan.
I just want to say thank you for all of the band-aid over the years. Every single time we did not get what we needed, somehow you guys rose to the occasion to sustain us. And I think that's a big, big, big deal when you have a large system such as this and everybody's got their own way of thinking about it, but somehow you managed to keep us going and I appreciate that. In the twenty-first century, that's constantly pushing on us, that we have to get into this conversation. And, you know, I keep bringing up AI, we haven't even gotten into that conversation yet. So thank you for the sustainability, the customization, working on a shoestring budget, whatever it takes, so that we can have a legitimate conversation to, to get us where we need to be. I don't think people see it, I don't think they see- I don't think they see it, I don't think they understand it all the time, but thank you. That's thirty years.
Thank you, Director Daniels. They are an exceptional team.
Yep, and that extends to the finance team and the HR team. It's a collaborative effort to figure out how to make it work.
Absolutely.
Now let's make it work right.
Let's make it work, right?
Okay, so by a short thumbs up, are we good with going out for the RFP? So this will come as a mid-year budget request. And then when you go through the RFP process, you will keep the board informed and let us know. The other thing that I would say, I mean, the Casby Conference that comes in December, I've seen a lot of vendors out there, they have a hall full of this. And maybe some of those vendors that you are talking about will be out there. So board directors, if you are planning on attending that Casby Conference, please do walk around there and maybe you will see some of those vendors out there now.
I want to say Power School was always there and I know they have gobbled up many different companies to become what they are.
Oh, yeah.
Which is why everybody has to, like, look at them now because they're a powerhouse. So thank you for, again, working to get us in without always having what you need to get it done. And that Power School has a huge display at Casby. Huge, but.
So, moving on, thank you, you got the thumbs up that you made up from the board. The basic feedback that we are getting is we need to be more efficient, we need to improve the timeline between the hiring and the, you know, the teachers get. And if this is going to be the first step in the process to become more efficient and catch up with where we've been lagging behind and we get all the feedback, other districts hire faster, they get this, and that's going to provide the support for HR people who are working behind the scenes and the finance people. Let's go ahead and get with RFP and come back. Thank you, sir. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, board.
Yeah, thank you for being here till seven forty-five in the.
Tom, thank you.
Okay, the last items on today's work session is the, and the people that are part of this discussion, please come and join us. This is the certificate of participation discussion, project and finance discussion. I know that we had several community meetings where you got feedback and I will turn it over to Superintendent Gall.
Yep, we have three sections to update the board on tonight. One, the summary recommendations coming from our community feedback. Secondly, I've asked the CEO of the Pikes Peak YMCA, Roy Williams, to join us to touch briefly on what that collaborative co-location could look like. Roy has traveled nationally on this topic. And then we have the financing folks here as well to talk about the devil of the details. And I turn it over to Dr. Comfort.
Superintendent Gall took my intro slides, so we're just gonna click right through those. And we're gonna turn it over to Perkins Eastman, they're gonna get us started today.
Great, thanks for having us again. We're all doing well and we'll try to go through this relatively quickly, but I want to make sure we take time for your questions, so please don't hesitate to ask any questions. So we're gonna go through, just a reminder, Patrick Davis with Perkins Eastman.
Doug Abernathy with RTA.
And Josh couldn't make it tonight, but he's obviously a key part of our team. But we're gonna spend the bulk of our time, you know, going through what we've heard in those engagement sessions that the director mentioned, talk about some different priorities to the COP and then obviously some discussion. So we've shared this past few times, but just as a refresher, you know, we're thinking about this COP as a real catalyst for the district. How do we start thinking about investment in districts? That's going to spur continued investment over a long period of time. So we're gonna focus tonight on that COP, that initial sort of igniter into the process. Tonight, talk about what we've heard and where our current thinking is moving forward. And then just briefly, we were here a number of weeks ago and there were a few things that we heard directly from you. The first, which is where we spend the most of the time, is making sure we get out to the community and hear the thoughts of stakeholders across the community. So we'll share some of the findings, both from the town hall sessions that we hosted, but also through some online survey engagement as well. So share some of the key takeaways from that. And then how that feedback can potentially influence that T-shaped strategy that we've been talking about for the past number of months. And you also, many of you also asked us to consider the impact of HVAC on the district and how this could be implemented in the COP. So you'll see all of these things over the next few slides. So the first thing is we put out a survey a number of weeks ago and a little hard to read in the text, hopefully you got a copy of this, but the first question is a lengthy question, but the gist of it is, do you support the idea of a COP? And what we found in the survey response was overwhelming, yes. So roughly ninety-seven percent of respondents to the online survey responded that they would support a COP. And the second question was around, where would you like that focused, broken down by different grade types? And so much of the conversation we've been having, the majority of the respondents identified that high schools and middle schools should be the area of focus for future investment. That's not discounting elementary schools, but certainly the majority of respondents were on the high school and middle school focus on the investment side. Then we asked a number of questions around, you know, where would you like to see the investments? And we asked this both during the town hall sessions, but also in the surveys. And there were some, a lot of key themes that came up, both from the online responses and also the town hall sessions and many of the things we've actually been talking with you all for the number of months now, things like air conditioning in buildings, supporting STEM and CTE spaces, performing arts spaces were part of the conversation as well. And then a number of teachers actually voiced the importance of natural light coming into their classrooms. The lack of daylight was a contributing factor to some of the, it was a comment that many folks would like addressed. So we found that to be consistent, both in the surveys and also the town halls. So we hosted.
Backup, just hit the last item at the bottom, the safety and security, just.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so the safety and security was not included in this. It was an overwhelming number-one thing in all of our feedback previously, so we wanted to make sure we were getting additional feedback. We're happy to say the district is, you know, taking some really strong steps in improving that outside of the COP conversation at all. We'll talk about it in a little bit as well, but thanks for the.
Patrick, make sure you just speak up, because you're not on microphone.
Oh, got it, yep, yep.
Before Dr. Venkis asks you to do it, I'll do it, I'll move you out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, I'll try to project my voice a little further. So we hosted multiple town halls, so this was the second round of town halls. So that in total, we've had eight different town hall sessions, both virtual and in-person. The town hall sessions this time were held at Palmer, Doerty, and then we had a virtual town hall session. I'm not gonna go through all of this, but a lot of the same themes came out during the conversation that we saw during the survey responses. So we are seeing a good, you know, representative response, both online and in-person. I would say each meeting, and thanks for the board members that showed up to the meetings, it was really great to have you there. Each meeting was a little bit different, I would say, and we got a lot of good feedback in all of them. I would say the Palmer one was very focused on HVAC and natural lighting in classrooms and furniture. The online one was more focused on, you know, the academic STEM side of things, outdoor classrooms. And then the Doerty was, I'd say, a mix of all of those things. So we got a lot of good input from a lot of different stakeholders across the city. So in summarizing those town hall sessions, again, safety and security, arts and STEM spaces and air conditioning were really, really prevalent in the conversations. Air conditioning in particular, similar to the conversation we had about making sure that all buildings are up to baseline standard of comfort and expectation. I would say the next category included the natural lighting. So again, a lot of future voiced concerns about lack of daylight in their classrooms, CT, improving CT in outdoor learning spaces. And then, and furniture was another key theme that came up largely from teachers in the district. Again, how restrictive older furniture can be in terms of how they're delivering instruction and the lack of ability to adjust the furniture to different instructional styles. And then I would say the lowest thing, lowest priority that came up was athletic spaces across the district in terms of the feedback we heard from town halls.
Do you think that's because we just redid?
Yeah, I think largely, yeah, but there was a lot of talk on the field and track replacements. I will say there was some pushback that money maybe shouldn't have been spent there. There was, I'm not saying that's our position, but some folks did voice that opinion. But generally, I think there's a general acceptance that the field conditions are better than they were. A lot of folks.
Especially for players, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the community as well. I think a lot of people are taking advantage of the new fields and there was a lot of, you know, while there was some pushback from some folks, there was a lot of appreciation from a number of folks too.
I was on the online one, we were hearing that pushback. And I think the team did a good job of providing feedback of the background that as a five-A district, we are actually very behind in having a up-to-date track field and you also did a good job explaining how we funded that, so just wanted to share that out. Thank you guys for providing the context to those individuals and their children were more in the performing arts, I remember. So, just to give context to the community.
So a couple of other things that we heard, we had a pretty good distribution of both parents, staff and faculty members and a few community members that participated. So it was a good distribution of folks. We kept hearing consistently, like we've talked as a group, about distribution of how funds will be allocated across the district, which really goes back to the T that we've talked about. The other thing that I know that the district is working on and Tamara is working on is some of the folks didn't know about the academic master plan, even though it's been out there for a while, so there's still some communication around that and the alignment of the academic sport plan with the academic master plan was something that we reiterated multiple times. And then the last item was, are you getting community input? And so the Perkins Eastman team, we're working together right now with a teacher from Palmer that's actually gonna engage the other social study departments, the other high schools, to help having some student, more student input this spring. So after the first year, we'll be engaging with some students. We sort of summarized these things, other items that sort of came up were HVAC, we've talked about bathrooms through the work that the district has done around middle schools and discussions around some of the vulnerability and safety and just the state of the restrooms. That was something that we, of course, talked about. Outdoor education was, outdoor learning environments came up more so in the online. CTE and STEM, of course, has been a continuing theme. There was some discussion about performing arts, but the district in the past has looked at as part of the facilities master plan, looked at upgrading some of the performing arts space across the district. So that's still on the radar based on feedback from both the community but also from previous work from the previous facilities master plan. And then Patrick just talked about furniture and windows that sort of translate in educational environments no matter what. The other item that we wanted to touch on a little bit is that we focused a lot on the COP and talked about that, but the district has been making great strides of sort of addressing the top-line T items. And you can see in this graph, the gray bar is really talking about what over the last three to five years that you've invested as a district. And we've got another graph, excuse me, that Jen and Patrick will talk to. But there's other investment that's been going on across the district that everybody should be aware of. Not all of it's visible. Jen made the comment today, a lot of that's been in the walls and not as visible maybe as it has, you know, you would like it to be, but taking care of a lot of issues. So there's movement in the district, you know, outside of this that's been very helpful.
And just as an example, the Halbert contract for HVAC will come to the board in November, which will have all of our elementary schools air-conditioned by the start of school next year. But we are still absent at the middle school and the high school level.
Yeah, we have parcels at some of the district, but there's only five buildings really in the district right now of fifty-three that don't have adequate air conditioning. That's been a concern, of course, at Palmer, but the district's done a pretty good job of addressing that, as Superintendent Gall was pointing out.
And just as comparison, at roughly, I'll call it, two million dollars in elementary school, we celebrate our small elementary school portfolio. A middle school is eight to ten million dollars if you have no problems to retrofit it. The high school, as we saw on the original plan for Palmer, was thirty million dollars just to get the chiller in and the cold air into the room. No new ceilings, no new walls, no shine floors, no smart boards on the wall. So the reason we preserve, or as we'll get here, we believe that the strong recommendation for the top part, the horizontal part of the T, is to now bite that elephant. Go after conditioned educational spaces in the secondary because the small budget that the three at the table here, Hannah and Jen and Brandon are managing, we can't do Halberts and Queen Palmers at middle school and high school level. That the money just doesn't go far enough. That's the whole idea of the COP, leveraging the money that you have for the future to be able to do it. Because doing it one rooftop unit at a time for ten years means as soon as you get done, the first rooftop unit's out there.
Next slide.
Yep, so we've been talking about this, you know, the T for a while, but we haven't really talked about the impact of decisions and how they impact downstream decisions or the Ts. So for example, the shirt is showing, you know, we need to figure out at some point, not tonight necessarily, you know, what's the investment we want to make at Palmer? And then what does that mean for the investment that's with the broad T? So obviously, the more you invest in Palmer, that means the fewer things you can do across that broad T. So over the next few weeks, we're gonna be working with the district leadership and obviously you all, if you come back over the next few weeks, all this effort is really need to sort of fine-tune and define, you know, how do we divide that T so that we're addressing the issues at Palmer that we've talked a lot about? But also, we're getting that broad T in a way that makes sense for the district. So just showing the sort of illustration here that the decisions are linked in terms of what do we do at Palmer and how does that impact the rest of the decisions across that broad T? But Superintendent Gall, you know, stole our thunder here, but he has the ability to do that, because he's a superintendent. But, you know, based on the feedback and certainly where the district is and really, you know, I think from the start, we said that the feedback from the community was gonna help drive this process. And I would say the HVAC conversation we had with you all and then all of the town hall sessions, particularly the in-person town hall sessions, I think it really enforced the need to really focus on getting building conditions up to a baseline standard so that all staff and students can expect to walk into a comfortable and safe and healthy environment. You know, we want to make sure that some of that T, a good portion of that T is going towards HVAC, where I think previously our mind was really around, you know, sort of alignment with the academic master plan, which I think is still part of the larger vision. But I think that it really became clear to a lot of us that HVAC is a desperate need among elementary schools. So a good portion of, some of that portion of that T, the broad T, we think really needs to be dedicated towards HVAC. And then, you know, the bathroom conversations, you know, are quite frankly heartbreaking sometimes when we read the comments from students and it's hard to ignore those. Certainly walking the buildings and seeing the conditions of the bathrooms. We think that's another area that we can actually focus with some of that broad T at a, you know, a sort of defined range of schools. Really making sure those environments are, A, up-to-date, but also designed in a way that students feel comfortable in a welcoming environment. You know, the feedback through the district surveys with the middle school students, again, just to recap that, really focused on that being in space in the buildings where students did not feel comfortable going. There was testimony and comments about students, you know, not going to the bathroom all day. I can't even imagine, you know, bathroom, drink so much water, go to the bathroom every hour. So, you know, the ability of, you know, not going to the bathroom is something that I think is something we can't ignore and we need to make sure we're listening to the student voice in this process. So again, we want to make sure that some of that broad T is going towards HVAC and bathrooms. I probably won't get the entire extent of that T, so we're gonna have to figure out the exact sort of division of investment. Maybe there's a few other things we can do to address some of the educational deficiencies, but I think a good chunk, you know, our recommendation at this point is addressing some of those HVAC deficiencies and bathroom shortcomings, I'll call them. So, you know, some of that broad investment would go towards those investments. So over the next few weeks, what we're gonna be doing is really trying to, you know, use a database, you know, data approach, data-backed approach to identify where it makes sense to do this. As we've talked about before, there are some buildings where it may not make sense to make significant investments because the building may need a larger investment for, to make financial sense. But, you know, trying to go through a number of inputs to identify, you know, where does it make sense to do HVAC projects, where does it make sense to do bathroom projects? Are we shooting ourselves in the foot by doing something at this building because of future investment that may come down the line? So we're in the process now of actually going, you know, through a school-by-school analysis of actually where does it make sense to implement. We wanted to come back to you and make sure you all, you know, understood where we were, you know, thinking about it in terms of recommendations based on the feedback through our walkthroughs and also the feedback we got from the stakeholders. Before we open up for conversation, I wanted to just hand over to Jennifer to talk about some of the past investments that D eleven has made.
So since passing the MLO in twenty-seventeen, some of the things, and these are the broader categories, we basically took our last five years of financials and boiled them into higher overarching categories so you can kind of have a picture of where we've been investing dollars for the district since that MLO passed. So we've done, you know, one point six million in electrical and that could be everything from fire alarms to lighting upgrades is included in there. HVAC, twenty-three million, interior, twenty-one million, that could be flooring, it could be bleachers, it could be new junior floors. It could be bleachers, it could be new junior floors. It could be new paint on some of the interiors of the buildings. So.
Excuse me, restrooms.
Restroom renovations, yep. And with all of those, so the ADA number is 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 a little bit low and doesn't accurately represent what we've spent. Because exterior work, we've incorporated ADA into exterior improvements, new ramps. And this building is another example of that. And then we've done ADA improvements as part of interior bathroom renovations and other things as well. Anytime we do that, we bring things up to code. So, yeah, so we've done between eighty and a hundred million between our funding and the funding that we've had from Best and Esser on improvements throughout the district, largely deferred maintenance related, but those are the big, big areas where we've been utilizing funds to make things better. And on the exterior, everything from the new sports fields and tracks to playground repairs and the new fall surfacing that's been put in, new irrigation systems. So just lots of improvements all across the district. Alto that's probably a representation of five to six hundred different projects that have been completed since the MLO passed. So lots of great things have happened, although always not, not always as visible as we'd like it to be, but we're getting there.
And I think just to sort of close, I think this COP and the way we're thinking about it can actually accelerate some of the great work that the team's been doing to, you know, address some of those HVAC shortcomings and deficiencies, address some of the bathroom issues. So, you know, I think the team has done an amazing job with the budget they've had. I think this is an opportunity as we've we've listened to to use the COP and that broad portion of the T to really sort of accelerate and and show the district that, you know, a lot more can be done with additional funding. And, you know, COP is an opportunity to do that. So I think that's all we have in terms of slides. We will pause for questions. Yeah, can we pause for questions? So then you guys can go and then we'll move on.
Okay. Boyd, you heard the discussion. So thank you for going out into the community and also getting that feedback to us. The community engagement piece is critical. This is the taxpayer dollars that we are reinvesting in our schools through the COP process. So from what I hear from you, the deep investment is in Palmer and the broad investment that our recommendation that's coming right now is in HVAC system and upgrading some of the bathrooms.
Yeah, and I think there may be some ancillary things on the on top of that, but I think the biggest chunks of money would go to those things. And then, like I said, we're going sort of a school by school analysis right now to see where it makes sense and, you know, putting some dollars to it to see, you know, how far that investment can go in terms of number of schools. And then if there's other things we can do on top of that within that range, we certainly will try to accomplish that. But I'd say the the biggest investment right now and focus right now is on on those things based on our own conditions assessments, but also the largely the feedback you referenced.
Great. Considering the time, the board, do you guys have any specific questions on the feedback? Any feedback that you want to provide for them? Open it up for the board discussion, direct announcement.
Just more of a comment that reminder that with the safety and security, if you could go back a slide, that safety and security bucket, get that one.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, four and a half million. The board approved eleven million with that funding balance. Yeah, so there is money already set aside to put towards safety and security, eleven million dollars. So.
This is just the everyone knows.
Yeah, this is what the capital team has been spending its money on, not what they need money for.
Right. So but I just want to reiterate that we are addressing safety and security already.
And I'll forgive the team, they won't say it themselves, but they've done an amazing job on that. I know the festival designs are actually starting right now, so there's a lot of things actually.
Entrance.
Secure entry.
Secure entry.
Secure entrance.
Sorry.
And then I'll just add that I know HVAC and bathrooms might not be very exciting, but it makes a lot of sense and we want our students and staff to feel comfortable in our schools. So.
Yeah, it came came through very clear in the conversations.
When we had a student at executive cabinet, what was that, a week and a half ago? And just hearing a student say, and I'm I'm at Doherty High School all the time and I can't imagine not going to the bathroom. And this young student said, I just don't go to the bathroom all day. And I was like, and so we immediately got a plan through Chris's team of how can we be more responsive? No bathrooms ever negatively impact for more than twenty-four hours, but to the larger modernization, instead of just constantly repairing it. And how do we start treating bathrooms like they are our own? How somebody finds joy in ripping a urinal off a wall is beyond me. And we, I believe if we start to communicate to our students what that cost is and what the value is, I don't think anybody will rip a urinal off a wall anymore. But it is very disturbing for me that somebody finds sport in destroying bathrooms in a building that we have adults and children in all the time. So we like the message. I think the other thing that we heard a lot of in the community feedback was nobody didn't like that message. So there were certainly a lot of people who liked the feedback on CTE and on arts, but then there there was it was much more polarizing than nobody wants to say that a kid should or a staff member should be in a school that isn't air conditioned or that a child should have to go weeks on end until we can repair or years on end or modernize a bathroom. So it seemed like a universal win across the system to say, we're the school district that has all air conditioned spaces in five years, seven years, or whatever that lift is based upon that expenditure.
So at some, if I remember right, at one of the board meetings or work sessions, you had made a comment, Superintendent Gall, that we are planning on investing in our bathrooms.
Yeah, we already have significant dollars program, but I think the word you all used was accelerate. So I won't ask the team right now exactly how long it would take to do every secondary bathroom, but it is certainly more than eighteen months.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions or comments to the team out here? Any, seeing that, thank you guys. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all the work that you are doing. Okay, go ahead.
So we're about to enter into this YMCA conversation.
Yep.
That was a part of the ask we had of the community, right? Of their thoughts and feelings on a partnership like that.
No, not directly, no.
Darn.
Well, I don't think we explained it to them. You know, that wasn't something that we asked.
We weren't there yet, but it would.
This this is now a Palmer specific conversation. And so as we make that transition, you know, Boyd and I have been asking a couple of the same questions, which is how many Olympic sized pools do you need on one city block that go mostly unused? And serendipitously, or by happenstance, we demonstrated a partnership this summer as we were doing some work at Earp's Field, that we got all our athletic teams that were training over the summer to actually be able to work out at the YMCA. I happen to come from a previous relationship when I was selling energy management. We were doing a deal with YMCA's in Florida. And YMCA's in Florida were big on part of their recapitalization of trying not to build standalone facilities. Where was it that the YMCA either had shared function or shared vision? And, you know, I I believe there's actually one in Pinellas County that you have an example of here. Then I'll turn it over to Boyd to kind of talk about that one.
Thank you for being here. Before you guys take off, so the next step in the process is you're going to do a little bit more on the T part of it, come back to the board at some point.
We're gonna start putting paper to pencil and show you all what renderings could look like and how much those dollars stretch. And it's a give and take. You saw ranges. So if it is every high school has to be air conditioned within three and a half years, that means you have limited depth. If it's, we don't want to impact instruction at all at Palmer, then that means that that the T has to be a little bit deeper. And that's why, but we have to actually get pencil on paper and show what those things look like.
Okay. And there's some requirements that we have to go through from a DAC and some other things that we need to work with Brandon specifically before we get back. So.
Back to you, Jeff, Boyd. It's great that you are here, Boyd.
And I owe Boyd a lot of pumping out time at YMCA. I had him here at five o'clock tonight. So I know you learned a lot. I learned a lot tonight. So.
We pride in community partnerships and that's what YMCA is.
Yeah, just a quick update or overview. Tomorrow, we're celebrating our one hundred forty-fifth anniversary here in Colorado Springs. Since day one, we've always had a presence in downtown. There was only downtown a hundred forty-five years ago. And so we're we're proud of having that presence, but we've gone through several iterations. If you if you if you read the news in December or watched the TV, we announced the partnership that we're gonna build affordable housing on the corner where the food trucks used to be. And 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 then COVID hit and our developer partner out of Omaha, who had invested in a lot of hotels, had a tough time. So we went to another developer out of Chicago. And then money's not as cheap as it was a few years ago. Construction costs went up about forty percent since then, so they had a hard time making making it financially work. But we are all about partnerships. We partner with over two hundred organizations throughout the community every year. Most of the school districts we partner with throughout the community. And as Michael said, we've got a long time relationship with Palmer and D eleven, as well as the other school districts. Mike just asked me to share a quick overview that this has been done before, so we're not recreating a wheel. As a matter of fact, there's multiple school projects with YMCA's going on across the country. We have signed on with a group, they're really the de facto facility and building services group for YMCA the USA called Grow Development. And he worked for YUSA, Rod Grozier, for thirty years and started his own company about ten years ago. And they are working with over forty projects right now across the country. Many of them are schools with YMCA's. So I want to give the comfort in the room that this has been done and it continues to be done because there's that synergy and it's the one plus one equals much more than two analogy. This obviously is is it makes sense. And our board and myself said, we're not gonna build another YMCA alone, a standalone facility. We added on to TriLakes with the the only healthcare partnership in in the state of Colorado and actually in about a seven state territory. But we plan on building, if we build new YMCA's, we are going to partner with another entity that's like minded. I'm just gonna go through, this is this is a deck that Grow Development had sent me. I'm not gonna go through all the detail, but I will just say that, as you can imagine, there are a lot of benefits and assets that both the YMCA and the school district bring together. That makes this a wonderful collaboration. I will get to the examples. And the first one, these are the case studies. So St. Petersburg, Florida, a good friend of mine, David Jezek is the CEO and they they just broke ground. This, I don't have all the details. I I didn't, I wasn't asked to prevent, provide all that. But this is a major project for Pinellas County that's gonna bring, I believe this is a middle school and a YMCA together. Again, with shared spaces, no sense of having two well-known entities, obviously a school district and a YMCA that's been been serving that community for well over a hundred years. Have two pools, have two wellness centers, have two community rooms, have, you name it. There's a lot of opportunity for a collaboration, which brings the cost of the project down, but also has a synergy to it that really provides excelled and amplified opportunities for the kids and the constituents, the parents in the community, far beyond just the eight to three o'clock school day. But before and after school, imagine onsite full day licensed childcare for your teachers that can come and drop off their little one and then go down the hall and go to school. Knowing that their little one is probably gonna get swim lessons that day and as they grow and get a little older, learn how to dribble dribble basketball and just enhanced opportunities rather than being offsite looking for full day childcare, which we definitely know is a short shortage in Colorado Springs. This just shows a diagram of the blue represents, I believe, the shared space. And I went and visited with a few of my board members to Lincoln, Nebraska. They have two middle school YMCA partnerships and it was good to see how there's a separation. So there's safety for the Y, there's safety for the kids, but there's a there's a combined wall where others allows access points for the students to come into the YMCA when that time is appropriate, vice versa for pool activities, so on and so forth. Again, it's it's been done before, so it's not like we have to sit and try to figure out, well, how would this work? Having community members at the same location of a school, it happens all the time. This this one is fully a fully funded facility owned by the school district. The YMCA will have an operating agreement. So if you look at one YMCA school district example, you've looked at one. There's so many different ways that you can skin the cat and it really is up to the two entities to come together on a on a on a plan that works for both.
I just want to pause on that for a second because I think everyone understands the concept of sharing that that common space, pools, auditoriums, gymnasiums. The T, the the thing that's important here that we would have to iron out, does the district want to own all of the facility and then make it revenue generating? You know, and whether you watch HGTV or not, everybody says, build an apartment in the basement because you don't really need that space and pay off a thirty year mortgage every month because somebody's renting out that space to you. So for the increased cost, and we anticipate that that shared space needs to be fifteen to twenty percent larger than it would be if it were standalone to serve both communities, could you then do that by increasing that athletic space, we'll call it, by twenty percent in the design, but then actually have a ninety-nine year lease agreement with the downtown YMCA that they're paying to use that space? And so now when we think about the COP, you're actually building and taking revenue that you generate to pay down the COP at a faster rate. So the idea of can, or do you ask each people to bring in that percentage into the cap stack for the project? There's a variety of different ways for us to do it.
But the example, the example that we had announced in twenty nineteen, we were going to be a tenant, a long-term tenant of the developer that was gonna build. They were gonna own the YMCA building and after forty years, the YMCA would attain the ownership of that. But we would have a forty year lease or two two twenties is the way it was set up. And that was something new for our board. You know, our facilities were always owned by the YMCA. But, you know, I really convinced them that it, we don't have to own. Yeah, it's great for our balance sheet, but a few predecessors of mine before took on a lot of debt. And and that debt, it was crippling, especially when a COVID hit. And so we just need a program. We want to serve the community. That's why we exist. We build community. And we do it in partnership with so many other entities. So for us, we don't have to own. We could be a tenant, but there could be a combination. Again, there's so many different ways that this could be organized. This one is in Louisville, Kentucky, another great example. And and again, there's so many of these examples out there. If we could just get a private jet and go pop from, you know, Colorado Springs Jet Center to a bunch of different cities across the country, you would see so many different examples. And everyone is such a highlight. And there's never been a negative comment from either the school district or the YMCA administration that it's not working. They just figure it out. They come together. They know that their alignment is gonna help and and the beneficiaries are gonna be the constituents of that school district. So it's a win-win for all. This one is, it's placed in a planned community where this developer was required to set aside for a school district or for a school because of the growth. So the YMCA and the school district connected at the gymnasium. But again, it's another example of, this one's a little bit different than St. Petersburg. The Y, this one, the YMCA actually brought some capital to the table. But again, clear identification of what the YMCA has, what the school district has, and then that shared component. Boise, Idaho, this one is currently under construction. This one is the most similar according to Grow Development, Rod Grozier, because Boise is much similar to Colorado Springs. The the comparisons I hear often, the size of our community, the mountain town. We're not a capital, but there's a lot of other similarities to it. This one is right in the downtown and they are partnering with the local school district of the inner city of Boise to construct this project. And this one is either just breaking ground or will be soon. But this one is going to print here soon. And this is the, this is the project here in Boise. So the YMCA provides space to the school, shares campus with five hundred student Hillsdale Elementary School. This this one is Hillsdale. This is, oh, this is a different one. I'm sorry. The downtown, this was a separate one. Meridian was their first partnership with the school district. The downtown is getting ready to get to get constructed at this time. And then there's another whole roster of partnerships that they can provide. They have a database that takes it from Maine to California and all the different aspects of the partnership and how it how the two align. And here's just a short list of examples that that they're currently working on right now.
Do any of these take on a third partner like the city park and rec department in addition to the Y, in addition to the school?
Yeah, Moore, Oklahoma, I visited that one. It was with the school district, the city of Moore, which is outside of suburb of Oklahoma City and the YMCA. And they actually built the largest auditorium in the state of Oklahoma. It's amazing. And it serves the purpose for the school, the school district. They have regional and state events there, college level events, but that's a three-way partnership. And we were actually looking at that with D forty-nine with their charter school. Um and we were actually looking at that with D um forty-nine um with their charter school. Um when they were building their charter school a few years ago, looking at a three-way partnership with the town monument and building a pool. Um but that one just didn't happen for lots of reasons. But there are those examples out there.
So when you have the three partners, um and this is in other places that you've established. Have they been uh cooperative with one another over a long period of time? Does it change with the change in the mayor of the town or the CEO of the Y or any of that?
Nothing I've seen, nothing that um as we dig this up. And I actually sat in a in a meeting um at our general assembly in July. Uh which was a round town table discussion like this of projects that were going on. Um and every one to a person, it's been positive. Um it's been positive for us with our, I'll give you an example, our partnership. Um different scale, but with the uh Centura. Centura's gone through two different CEOs locally. We we struck that deal with Margaret Sabin. Um and they're on our cer- third CEO, but yeah, we have a great partnership of the Tri Lakes. Um and so um every partnership that we've had here in Colorado Springs with the city. Um the southeast, uh for example, our southeast right next to Sierra High School, we have a partnership with the school district. Uh but also the city, the city helped build that pool uh under a twenty-five-year agreement, uh which will be coming up in twenty twenty-seven. Um so we've gone through a lot of mayors. We went uh to a strong mayor, what, eight, nine, ten years ago. Um so a lot of things have changed, but yet the cooperation and collaboration has not changed.
That's that's how lawyers make their money. Make sure you get it written down, uh cause then you abide by it. We we have been talking in our own uh uh office planning sessions of, is there a potential third party? Party, we've asked the city, is the city interested in a downtown community center? Is there a senior center? There's certainly interest by either the YMCA or others in an early education center, which is something you've also heard me talk about. When we think about um our highest uh fill-rate elementary schools, all being our small schools mostly in this downtown corridor. If we were to build a birth-to-kindergarten center in the downtown area, does that free up universal pre-K? Out of Steel or Stratton or Taylor or Columbia? Which means that you could add a fourth and a fifth gate strand to those buildings. So those are things that we would still like to be able to explore. But I asked Boyd to come because there were some questions about, you know, what is this partnership about? What does it look like? Right now, it's two parties both interested in recapitalizing very old facilities that are right now right across the street from each other. Adding a fourth piece of property to this conversation, I think just creates more opportunity. For us to have a longer-term solution that works for the city. I think it's a challenge for the Y to think that they can build a standalone facility. And I just think it is not as thoughtful or efficient for us to literally build a swimming pool across the street from a swimming pool.
No, and and what going back to the childcare, the YMCA is the leading childcare provider in the country as well here in uh Colorado Springs. Um so we do that and and we do it well. Um and that's certainly part of our program that we had anticipated across the street with the developer. Um but uh you are, you know, Mike's right. I mean, we we sit on a downtown block that we can sell and and move away from. Um and bring those um you know, assets either to this project or with some of other other facilities that have needs as. As I hear, uh we have bathroom needs and and other needs in our aging facilities. Although um we've done a pretty good job with building new facilities and keeping up. This is the this is the albatross that has a lot of deferred maintenance and other values, just not the value proposition to renovate it, it's just not there. Uh but we sit on valuable dirt, just just like the school district does. So uh thi- this partnership would. Uh again, be new to this community, not new to the YMCA or school districts across the country. Um but it would absolutely redefine this part of downtown. And I think as families look to move to downtown, to see that partnership and have a state-of-the-art facility where it's kind of a one-stop shop. Um with, you know, a potential IB school or, you know, a one top-tier school. Along with a resource like the YMCA that can provide opportunities with childcare, um it's it's a pretty uh pretty exciting opportunity. And uh I could say my board is is fully on board uh with this this conversation, um and advancing this conversation going forward.
So how would this um um fit into what we talked about at a different work, say, uh work session? Where we were looking at pieces of property that were part of Ha- Palmer High School? And um as I recall, eliminating one of those and combining the other two.
Yep. So if we were to, if we were to, just in that simplest way and on the record recorded, not bulldozing Palmer High School. But seeking to build a new uh destination IB diploma school. If we were to build a standalone facility at Erbs Field. It would be inclusive of instructional spaces, performing arts spaces, and athletic spaces. What we would do in the simplest of terms is have a YMCA entrance to the, and they would have an administrative space. Either co-located or outside of that for that athletic space. And we would create the MOU of how we co-use that space. There is a cost, you're gonna have to overbuild that space by about twenty percent. Because the YMCA is not gonna say, we don't use auditoriums uh between the hours of eight and two o'clock in the afternoon. But they don't use them a lot. So do you need an accordion wall or some way to have one basketball court that's for the Y? Or maybe it's a half court and then we have a full court? Those plans exist all over the country. I don't wanna try and solve them right here, but there's gonna be no sixteen-year-old kids swimming by seniors with doing their a- a- aqua aerobics. They will be bifurcated, they will be separated, but it is just a waste of resources, of limited resources. For both of us to need the massive square footage to support what is really limited usage. We all want access, but we just don't use those spaces that much. And so and you know, I think the the ones that we shared here, if you could see the schematics, particularly the shared space one in Saint Petersburg, it shows you. These are the common spaces, basketball courts, weight rooms, aerobic rooms, and not and uh auditoriums. They they've been designed, they've been co-designed, they enter on the east, we enter on the west. That's the simplest way to do it. The more complex way is if we're building two different standalone facilities on two different blocks. How we do that, how we sequence that could impact the deal. I've said I wanna prioritize academic space, cause we're a learning institution. The YMCA wants to prioritize the athletic and the activity space, because that's the business that they're in. So how do we do that on the three-block area from the tennis courts to Palmer High School to the YMCA? That's what guys like Doug are here for, right? And so that's where we wanna get to in the next phase, is what does the COP look like? One, we could pay for the whole thing and they can pay us to do it. Uh Boyd and the YMCA can sell their property and add that cash to the cap stack of what it costs. So if they could generate ten million dollars in the sale of their property, then our eighty million dollars budget is is for a ninety million dollar project. And then they own their ten million part uh dollar part of it, right? Couple of ways for us to think about. But we just see really big opportunity in shared visions, which is we all serve the community. We're just serving different ends of the community. We have a really um a a tight part of it. YMCA's have been a part of schools. Um you know, every, my military background, every city we lived in, we were in the YMCA. All my kids learned to learn to swim at a YMCA. I'm a member of the downtown Y right now. It is the only downtown workout facility. Other than the internal located ones in some of the apartment buildings, but they don't offer the 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 activity-based experience that the Y does.
And and not to correct Mike, because he knows this, and when I, it's not just about athletic space. We do that. Uh and that's the misnomer in our community. Most people think we're just a swimming gym, but we're not. You know, we operate the senior center, we we're the largest childcare provider. We're the uh uh largest in the country of first-time employment for teens. Um oftentimes they're lifeguards or they're wellness attendants. Um and so again, there's so many opportunities to partner with internships right down the hall at the Y or or, you know. Job opportunities uh co-located. Uh there's just, like, we could sit here all night and just brainstorm and and whiteboard all the opportunities where kids and families will benefit. And it's happened before, which is the great thing. So we don't have to sit back and figure out where we start, because there's plenty of opportunities. And we partnered, we're getting ready to sign on with Grow Development as an official development partner to help us through this process.
So we're not asking anything for the board. This is FYI only. I think the only thing is if this is absolutely something you're not interested in. Let us know as we go back to the other COP conversations, but we will be presenting standalone, joint, separate buildings, uh underground tunnels. We'll do all that with uh those architects.
Is it possible to consider a CTE center? Something that also assists the students with going and doing those jobs with partners in that space? Is it, I mean, I'm just thinking about the Cherry, you may have to visit the Cherry Creek.
I I'm very aware of the the Cherry Creek. It's an abnormal facility.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we're building.
I I think if you were gonna ask me for an off-the-cuff answer, I think that's a great centerpiece to a bond initiative. That Lawson realizes that dream, you know, and I'll admit even to my own. Um prep for the interview a year and a half ago, I thought Lawson was a CTE center for the district.
Yep.
And 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 now we have, we have much of our pathways are being delivered there, but they're usually being delivered onsite at the comprehensive high school. Odyssey instructors leave and teach in the mornings at Mitchell and the afternoons at Coronado for those CTE things. There, most of the actual hands-on CTE experiences are happening at individual comprehensive high schools.
Yeah, which is why I'm asking you to move on. But it's a conversation, it's not a have-to, and it's a question.
Yep.
So I'm asking, based on what you said, if we're dialoguing about it, we we dialogue about all of it. Throwing it in the pot.
Yes. So any further comments or, thank you for being here, sharing this.
Yeah.
So this gives us a, I, yeah, I'll come to you. This gives us a idea as to that these partnerships exist exist and coming and seeing those pictures up there and then trying to visualize. How that is going to look in downtown. And you see downtown how much it has changed in the last ten years and all the uh revitalization that's going on out there. And now thinking that this can very well happen at Palmer and how that collaboration looks like, that looks phenomenal. So you guys own that building at that YMCA and the dirt town?
We own, we own that entire block minus the pizza. Um uh five thousand square feet of land, I think it is, that just got purchased or is getting ready to be purchased. Um but then will be donated, I'm sure, back to whomever. Um and then we co- co- locate uh or co-own the parking garage with First Presbyterian Church. Uh but we own the rest of the the city block.
Yeah, and that's valuable dirt, like what you said, that if you are going to move away from there, I'm sure uh no um. No cost housing, development and things like those would be very interested in, right, Thomas?
Uh so I'm just thinking about like the Garden Ranch facility closed, that building. So that your board, your hopes, the YMCA are to just revitalize your downtown location? Or is it that, and so that that's where the interest comes with partnering with us? I just am trying to get a better.
Yeah, so uh Garden Ranch was, you know, open in eighty-two, and that was kind of the north side of Colorado Springs. And as the city sprawled, that um just became irrelevant. You know, mo- there were less and less families. You only have three areas, cause you got the the park kinda to the south or southwest. Um and and as the city continued to sprawl, we just didn't have the population base and the facility continued to age. Um it was, you know, almost forty-seven years old and a lot of deferred maintenance and it the ROI just wasn't there. Uh we did a study, we had a a consultant come in and uh his recommendation um during COVID, but we were looking at this prior was sell. But he said, put everything into downtown.
Okay.
And our board is a hundred percent committed to downtown. Before we go east or anywhere else, downtown is our number one priority.
So were you already having these conversations then and like of how do we revitalize our downtown?
Yeah, uh it, yeah, I've been the CEO for ten years and we've been having them for eight years.
Oh, wow. Oh, okay.
They started years before me. This is a fifty-two-year-old building, so um it's probably twenty years past um some type of renovation. Uh but we 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 also know that, you know, as things changed in our society and community, we just can't do it alone. And we can't just put a Band-Aid um on that facility, it would just cost too much. And to build a new Y uh in today's dollars, and you know this, it would be approximately forty million dollars to build what we need. Which is a downsize of our current facility. We don't need a hundred thousand square feet. But in partnership with uh for example, like this, y- y- again, a shared pool, shared uh gymnasium, uh wellness center that your students and athletes could use. Yet, you know, so can our uh members. I mean, there's a lot of ways to do this and and then our footprint is much smaller. And it's what we can afford um and still really um serve the community, which is our mission.
So as far as for for your team, uh my thoughts are, I mean, this sounds really exciting, this partnership. Uh and then I have to kinda take a step back and think, well, what is it? Why are we even having this conversation about Palmer? Were we wanting to redo the pool? I don't remember that really being kind of one of the priorities for Palmer. So um as we move forward and trying to reach the decision, it sounds so exciting. But I wanna just make sure we as a board and you superintendent really have kind of our bucket list of. This is what we are wanting from Palmer or, you know, is it air conditioning? Um for me, it would be some sort of preservation of some of the historical parts of the building, uh and what does that look like? Um but yeah, just how do how do we do a partnership that makes sense for what we actually were wanting to achieve in, like that you said, academic spaces?
And so I think it's, we're at that space now where we need to put pencil to paper and show what those renderings look like. You know, what if it were a modernized version of the original Colorado Springs school? Right? Does that make recent Palmer graduates upset? But makes still living graduates of the Colorado Springs High School very excited? Those are the things that we then wanna be able to shop to that community to understand what's interesting to them. But what we need and what we have right now is a general T for us to then go and see where, how much does money go? How far does money go? You know, a- a- as I've expressed, and you know, I'll just say it again. I don't wanna go forward losing instructional minutes, walking a block and a half to go to an outdated field. With a pool in there or a workout center.
And the one, the one thing that we've talked about, this group talked about it, it's been a long night, so totally understandable. Was the safety and security concern of walking down the hill to Erbs and and losing of students and. The direct Director Loma talked about that, right? And that that's probably.
I know, and I think back on that, I mean.
Yeah, and I understand, and I understand that, but you know, um modern contemporary schools that. Go from block to block to go from school to school is not the best practice from a safety and security standpoint. And so regardless, that's probably, along with the last minutes from instruction, the safety and security is probably the number one thing that's driving that.
But we we wanna let the renderings take over the conversation.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise, we're all in our own things in our head. And what we really need to see is, that's why we have experts, what are those costs? You know, my big joke all the time is, as soon as we start this, it'll be asbestos, lead, and mercury sitting, right? It's like, ah, right? The greatest idea goes from eighty million dollars to five hundred million dollars. We need to let the experts do that. We've obligated no money to actually having to do that. It's time for us to advance this conversation into what is that gonna look like? And the timing, as I think Brandon can talk to, you know, if we want any of these things to start in the summer. We 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 gotta get to a decision point here of, we wanna commit the money and these are the phases. We know those things are easy lifts, start that. This is gonna take a year to plan and develop. We'll preserve that much money for it, so on and so forth.
But to your point, uh like that safety and security piece, um yeah, I I hear what you're saying. You know, if there's something going on in the neighborhood, having kids walking a block. Um maybe isn't ideal. I enjoyed the walk in gym class personally, getting outside, but. Uh I see that point and I just wanna bring it back to, that was a conversation we had, but I don't know that we as a board. Really nailed down on that is something we actually want to pursue, like that we. Do see that as we wanna move Palmer High School as being more s- what centrally located and not spread out over a couple of blocks. So those are the conversations that I feel like we still need to have, like what are those key pieces? That we want out of this if we're putting all this money into Palmer High School.
So.
Well, I think, excuse me, but I think when um those images went up with the the current plan and the three pieces of property. It's like, and what kind of a a path are we gonna walk towards that brings us to some sort of a, what you're lea- leading to? And that is, how do we want this to look? What kinds of services and um containment do we want in a plan moving forward? And do we wanna sell a piece of property? Cause yes, dirt is expensive. But what's happened here in the district is, once you sell something, you'll never get it back. And so part of the conversation that I think you're talking about is this conversation and the next conversation and the one after that. When we talk about um are we really gonna be able to bring back ten thousand students? And if we are, are our current facility is capable of providing educational space for each one of those kids? That's a part of the conversation. So I think this is the beginning stages and I think your points are well taken. It is gonna take an awful lot more conversation to figure out and distill what it is that we want. And a partnership with an outside um entity. Entity, um and I incidentally just joined yesterday, so yes. No, not the downtown one, but I have access to all of them.
Across the country.
There you go.
Still lose your key fob.
Um. Then I am familiar with other entities partnering with uh with schools. Um. Panorama, I believe, Panorama Middle School, I believe, is in a partnership with Park and Rec. Uh Guyberson was in a relationship with Park and Rec for their playground, so this is not, this is a conversation worth having. Um I also entertained an idea about um. Um. What's it called when you have a facility for seniors, a senior center? A senior center, because there was a lot of conversation on the west side about their senior center, not Latin there up. But I don't want to take the conversation too too far abroad so that we can't. We can't get a cohesive uh idea of the direction in which we want to go, so. Uh to to your point, I think this is the conversation, we'll just have a lot more conversation.
So what we know based on the data is that Palmer has the lowest educational adequacy in the district from a high school standpoint, we also know that.
What does that mean?
So from an an educational environment standpoint. Wh- how well does the school right now deliver current education? Uh compared to other schools in the district and across the country? And so it it has as much need from an educational environment standpoint because of the age of the building as any of the high schools in the district. It also has one of the biggest needs from a deferred maintenance standpoint. And so you could, the analogy you could use is that we know that Palmer High School has a knee ache. We don't know if that just needs physical therapy and spend time at the Y in the pool. Or if we need a minor operation or if we need a major operation, through the design process. We'll find the right solution for that knee because we don't know it right now. But we're also constrained by how much money that we're gonna spend on that building. And so we have, different than your knee, you go, you use your insurance, you get your knee fixed. We know we have a knee issue, we don't have all the answers to what is ailing the knee, but we know that we need to address it. And so the final solution probably won't be fully understood when we do a COP, but we know that we have a patient that has a need. And we we need to address the need. The question is, is we know that it's gonna be phased unless it's an all-in sort of solution. But we know that we have to start to address the problem at Palmer. And so when the board, along with the direction from Brandon and Superintendent Goll, determine what the value of that is with the board. Then we're gonna start to address the the issues that we have. And there won't be an answer.
And engage and and engage and ask those questions, not not in isolation.
That's correct.
So we're we're just wanting to advance the conversation one more level, which is, let's get a couple of things on paper. For us to come back in the work session in November, that says, generally speaking, for eighty million dollars. These are three different types of options. Then don't commit to any of them, it's not these windows and that side, then if we're good. We vote for the COP because we still have to talk to our finance guy here and then we engage in a deep planning conversation. With our community who's talking about, is it a circular um um common area, right? Do we, everybody wants to view a Pike's Peak, do we not? Should it be solar on top? Like, yes, we have to walk that dog.
Yeah, just to ex- just to clarify what Mr. Goll is saying, we do have the ability to approve the COP without having all of the details decided, right? Like, we have to know broadly what we're doing, but we can approve a COP, get design started on some of the other projects while we engage the board and the community on discussions about what exactly happens at Palmer. There's not an unlimited time limit there, right? The COP itself does have time limits, but it won't force us to make those decisions. Um next next month, right? So we do have the ability to to continue to have that conversation.
But part of that conversation about the COP is that um would. Would be the type of arrangement that we have with the Y, that's gonna be revenue generating, we pay the initial outcome and then we generate revenue to pay down our COP. Or um are we gonna go forward with our eighty million and this will be. Added on to the top, I mean, and that makes a difference in how the COP is gonna get repaid.
Um I I I think that all comes through planning, I mean, I I just really think that. We want to continue to advance ourselves to then learn what those opportunities are. You know, the feedback that I hear from Director Daniels is um paralysis by analysis. We can spend another year and a half talking about what we want to do with the COP. To watch the cost to borrow on that COP continue to increase. And then somebody else say, well, I heard you're gonna go for a bond, why don't you just go for the bond? And then spend another year and a half, the feedback was clear, ninety-seven percent of the people polled said, please, go for a COP. We'll engage with our community to understand how best to use those dollars on the top of the T and the bottom of the T, we have a general framework right now. Which is, everything tells us Palmer High School needs investment. Even if we just said this was an HVAC-only solution, we would say thirty of those million dollars have to go to HVAC at Palmer. But then every one of you would rightfully say, don't put thirty million dollars into a building and not redo the leaks in the ceiling. And the narrow hallways and the impossibility of trying to get to passing period. Everyone should know that the capacity of Palmer High School without adjustments is listed at twenty-four hundred kids. And we have roughly thirteen hundred kids in there right now. We are only using half of that space. That's how inefficient that space is, when you walk in there, it doesn't feel like you're only using half that space. The building one built says it holds twenty-four hundred kids, of which it has thirteen hundred children in it.
So, okay, do we have more presentation? I see a few more slides, that's going to happen, okay? Then then no, 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 let's, thank you, no, one minute, no, what I'm saying is. I'm just, uh, you know, the conversation to wrap it up from the board's side. At the last work session, the conversation at this point with the board is, does this kind of YMCA school partnership even exist? How does it look like? It seems like we advanced that one step by your presence and your presentation, that that is possible. And that has been done safely in other places and it is a dynamic partnership where both of us can mutually partner. So one of the requests that came from Superintendent Goll is that unless the board is completely against this kind of thing. We, I show some for something today, say, let's explore this opportunity and come back with how this would look like. This is going to take several steps in the process before we come to the, we are not committing anything today. That this is what the what the partnership is unless the board here wants to say no to this partnership at all. Is the board comfortable at least saying, hey, this is an exciting new thing and we can go forth forward with the thing? Great, okay, that's awesome, thank you for being here, let's see if something comes out of you.
We have some, bring them to me.
Okay, okay, absolutely, okay.
Thank you.
Now, um, let's move on to the final.
Uh so the issues for the board, um, this is the, uh, this is Dan O'Connell, who's the managing partner at RBC. That's the firm that uh we are under contract for for underwriting for if the board decides to move forward with the COP. He has been waiting.
Patiently.
Very patiently, um, I'm gonna hand out his presentation just so that you have that. And uh I think his presentation will be brief, but he'll answer any questions you have.
We'll keep it brief, uh, just in the interest of time, but so thanks for having me, uh, appreciate it. Last time, I think that was virtual, so I apologize for that, but uh it's good to be here in person. Uh as as we heard, uh, I've been actually working for the district since two thousand six. Uh I've done multiple bond issues for the district, also uh re- and some COPs for the district, so. Uh have a good bit of experience within the district, also worked for Academy, uh worked for Pueblo. Worked for almost all the districts in El Paso County, to be honest, um and then all the way up I twenty-five corridor. Anthony is my uh partner in this and he puts the other lot, the modeling, financial modeling, uh that looks at the tax impacts and projections for the future. Uh he is, I think he's on Zoom, but he might be muted, so if we have a question for Anthony, we'll unmute. So, just backing up, we keep hearing COP, COP, CP, I assume everybody knows what a COP is, right? Just a glorified lease, right? Yeah, exactly, you got it. Um glorified lease where what you're doing is essentially, it doesn't require a vote, right? So there's no vote, there's no GO vote, um and the school board would annually appropriate a piece of collateral. So let's say you're building or you're borrowing a hundred and thirty million. So you would then use a piece of collateral that's somewhat. Somewhat similar to a hundred and thirty million dollar value, okay, it can be a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty, somewhere in that range. And then annually, you would actually appropriate on that lease. And so it's not a long-term fiscal obligation, which is a very important difference between that and a GO bond. So it's only a one-year annually appropriated fiscal borrowing, right? So that's why you can do it without a vote.
So at the end of the year, then you're re.
Yep.
Reconfirming or you're confirming that you're in this obligation for another year.
That's. Absolutely, it's a year to year.
And if you have the money, you can pay it off?
You can, uh, it depends on what the call features are on it, we can talk about that in a second, but it depends on how early you can pay that off. Um if you have the funds, we can structure it with a five-year early call, a ten-year early call. It's entirely up to the board and their direction, but that does affect the borrowing rate on on what you do. So the shorter the call, the higher the interest cost would be on the COP. Um but yes, to answer your question, um at the end of the year, you would appropriate on whatever. It's typically a school, it has to be an essential use facility, so you would appropriate every year and say. Yes, we will pay this obligation for the next year, if you don't, and you give up your collateral. It's never happened, ever. We, and let's hope that doesn't occur ever, uh there was a case in Sheridan where it came close, uh and they still reference that in financial documents. And that was like nineteen ninety-two, ninety-seven, I think, something like that.
Sheridan, Colorado?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it did almost happen, but uh they figured it out. So uh that's one part of it, is when, you know, when you, when you go through this process, and I know you guys are still very much in the development stages right now. This is kind of the stuff that we we need to think about as we get closer to the actual funding mechanism and and going through the financing process. Just like a GO bond, lease payments are made semi-annually, so principal and interest payment semi-annually. We've looked at twenty-year obligations, twenty-five-year obligations, and I think that's kind of where we've we've looked, we've kind of centralized around twenty, twenty-five year leases. Uh recall, and we'll go over that in a second, but we're really trying to structure these leases around a revenue constraint. Uh which is the existing mill levy override stream that the district has for capital, and we'll go into that in the next slide. The rate is typically slightly higher than a GO bond because in a GO bond, your property taxes are specifically dedicated to repayment of those bonds. Um it's an unlimited tax GO pledge, which means you can raise the mill levy up and down in order to pay for those bonds. Uh whereas a COP, I just talked about the annual appropriation risk, that's factored in there. But it's not much of a difference, but it is some difference in interest rate, slightly higher, so it's worth noting. We talked about the call date already, um what we're looking at right now is a ten-year call. Uh but we could certainly structure that five, eight-year calls. You know, I keep hearing Cherry Creek's Innovation Campus, we did that COP for them in two thousand seventeen, I want to say. And that was done with a three-year call and they actually paid it off with GO bond proceeds in an election like two years later. So uh it can, it can be structured in in many different ways, I think the market was probably more favorable back then. Um but certainly, uh I think that's, that's something we could look at as we go through it. So I've been tasked with, or we've been tasked with looking at, okay, what are the revenue constraints that we're dealing with? Recall that we have a mill levy override of seventeen million, um that was approved specifically for capital projects. Uh and so certainly we don't, at least the direction that I've been given is, we we don't want to go to that seventeen million, it'd be nice to be right around half. As kind of the revenue constraint that we're targeting. Um I've heard eighty million many times as far as the total project amount, I don't know if that's uh, if that's something we need to work into that. Cause I actually started at a hundred and twenty million for the total project.
No, I think you're in the, I think you're in the range.
Okay.
I think eighty was just specific to one school.
Got it, okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, cause I was gonna say that, you know, that's not one year in that revenue constraint, if that'd be less, it'd probably be more closer to seven million, but. Basically, I have a range of a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty million right here. Uh so this gives you the revenue constraint for a twenty-year and a twenty-five-year term. Uh so this would be what you would be paying out of your mill levy override funds on an annual basis. Uh in order to support this this COP. And so you can see ranging from a hundred and twenty million, I think the direction Brandon was that we were okay with twenty-five years, is that uh still the case? So we'll just go with twenty-five years, that would be eight point nine five a year, uh total cost out of the mill levy override. And that would support a hundred and twenty million dollar borrowing. There was a time not too long ago where we could actually uh get a good bit of premium, which is actually, you know, you ask for the power amount, but you you fund a project that's significantly. More than that, up to ten percent, sometimes twenty percent more than that, so you could actually. Put a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five on a hundred and twenty million dollar issuance. Because rates have risen so much, that's not the case anymore. So it's very hard to budget for premium, I'm sure Doug, you you've talked about that quite a bit with your clients over the course of the last year as well. But in in a rising interest rate environment, we can't really budget for much over what we're looking at here. Uh so ranging from a hundred and twenty, uh eight point nine five, all the way to a hundred and fifty, uh at eleven point one eight. Uh would be the payment out of the mill levy, that's what you would be looking at coming out of the mill levy override. So that's a twenty-five-year term and again, I'm happy to run any of these, um but. Any questions on on the financing and and the revenue constraints as it as it's stated? I'm gonna talk about the timing here in a sec. I've heard a lot of, you know, it sounds to me like there's a lot of discussions around, okay, are we just doing, you know, the top T, are we doing the AC, are we doing this, are we doing that? Um the YMCA project, all that kind of stuff. Uh can be figured into the timeline, what I've considered right now, and I don't, and this wasn't from any direction from anyone other than me just saying, okay, I'm gonna put a timeline forward showing how long this would take if we started tomorrow. Because there's a, a really a three-month process to get to the point of pricing and closing on the transaction. So. Please don't think that there was any input other than just from my brain as far as putting this together in the timeline. Which is not going through.
Our secretary just stepped out, so.
Hands up here.
This might be.
I think the battery ran out of time too here.
Yeah. It's tired.
It's tired, it's tired.
It's froze.
It's froze.
Can you manually do it with the?
I was trying up there.
Oh, the computer's froze.
Yeah, it looks like it's doing something.
Oh.
We have the handout, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. The handout's just full of such small type, but that's fine, um if you guys can put on your reading glasses, I suppose. So again, this is just looking at, let's say, uh tomorrow, or let's say today, you guys essentially, it's not a formal action by the board, but it says, okay. Go ahead with the process, so what that process involves, and I'm happy to answer questions on behalf of Kim Crawford, who's bond counsel as well, she's the attorney. Um I'm not an attorney, but I've done this plenty of times where I could probably answer the question. And if not, she will come back, but I I know she wasn't able to be here today, so are we just skip ahead?
He's, I think he's, I think Brandon's working on it.
Okay, no worries, I'll just keep going. Um what what happens, uh the first thing that would have to be done is is title work needs to be ordered on whatever property. So if if, you know, the first thing that we would have to do is look at the collateral package that you guys would have. Select what the collateral you would be using and order title work on that, that takes several weeks to go through that process. As they're doing that, um we would start putting together financing documents, what's called a preliminary official statement. Basically a prospectus um for a bond, for a bond issue or a COP. That's the offering document that goes to the investors and that's what's presented to the investors when we eventually price and sell the transaction. That, that back and forth goes with the district and that that would essentially be Brandon. Um and his staff going back and forth with with RBC and Bond Counsel to put together the offering document. That takes a month and a half to get to the point where you can actually have a presentable document. After that point, we would then go to a rating agency, potentially two, I would suggest probably just one. Uh and it would likely be Moody's Rating Agency. There is a rating presentation that go, that's put together that talks about your district, the financials, everything. Uh and then we receive a rating uh from Moody's on the transaction itself. All of this takes a couple months, two and a half months, and then we get to the point where you can actually price. Um once we price, uh we would have a sale delegate, which is typically the superintendent. Uh or the CFO or if neither are available, the board president to execute the and give the go-ahead for the pricing on pricing day. Um that needs to be defined in a parameters resolution. And that would be the board action item, so that would actually occur prior to the pricing and it can last for up through a year. So it, you know, we're talking about the timing and the issues around timing. So it, you know, we're talking about the timing and the issues around timing. If you're not certain you want to do the financing in January, which I have here, uh, and, you know, you haven't arrived at, at the projects or the amounts at that time. That resolution lasts for a year, okay? And so that would be an action item sometime. I have it, you know, estimated here in November, but certainly that's entirely up to the, to the board and, and when they would want to do that, but that would occur prior to pricing. So they just keep that in mind. That would be the, the one item that would require a board action. So once we get to that point, we would have a closing and delivery of funds. And you can issue COPs, let's say you only know you want to do the AC units. You can issue. We don't have to do, there's certainly, you could do this in stages. The interest rate market is such right now that rates have continued to climb over the course of this year. We're certainly, I, I think if you look at most estimates, they look to be going down next year, but nobody really knows. Yeah, we're just kind of free flowing here, so it's okay. So I think the idea would be to. Get the, get the, go through the work with Doug, uh, get to the point where you have the projects, at least an idea of what those projects might be and what those costs might be. And then we would need a three-month. Go-ahead basically, until we could actually provide the financing and provide the funding.
Dan, one quick question before you move ahead. That sixty-day process with title work and Moody's rating and that, what, like, what's a ball, what's a range of cost for that?
Well, the title work is, is dependent upon the, the size of the, the COP. And in that case, if it's a hundred and twenty million dollars, it's typically a percentage of, of whatever the COP is, so. I think it would probably be seventy grand, somewhere around there.
Okay.
Moody's. We want to get to the point with Moody's where we're paying them until we actually close on the transaction.
Okay.
Okay, so we want to go to Moody's until we're certain this is what we're gonna do.
So the pre-planning is seventy-ish thousand dollars for something?
Ish, yeah, I mean, it, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest to order title until you have a good idea as to what. You know, you don't want to, you don't want to order title work on a, on a facility unless you're pretty darn sure that it's gonna occur, right?
Do you have to collateralize the properties that you're gonna do the work on, or can you collateralize other properties?
No, no. No, you can substitute collateral, so any collateral, it just has to be somewhere in the range of the value of the hundred and thirty or whatever it is you're borrowing.
Great, thank you.
Yep. And so, you know, what I was gonna say is, you can, you can parse this out, do thirty million now, the rest of it in whatever six months. Obviously, there's costs that are gonna be duplicative if you do that, but if you're not ready to do the full financing now, you could certainly consider that as well. That is, oh, there's the, there's the, uh, that's, that's what our estimates are, but again, I think those are certainly estimates in the forecast, but. They are estimated to go down over the, the course of the next Q, at least the next two quarters, and I think. Generally speaking, um, moderate over time, but rates have been going up significantly over the course, the course of the last year. Right now, an estimated twenty-five-year borrowing would, and again, this is, is an estimate, would be about five percent. So. Double tax exempt, so it's still pretty attractive as far as, as far as a borrowing, if you look at it as over the course of the last thirty-year history of, of rates. That is essentially my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions as far as timing or, or how this would work, uh, through the board. Or through the, the process with the administration.
Okay, you have something?
Uh, yeah, so just so I'm clear.
Go ahead.
You said that the formal board action vote doesn't take place till that resolution, parameters resolution. So it's basically like, we just give a thumbs up tonight of yes, start the work, like that's what could potentially happen?
Yes, it would just be an informal thumbs up and then we would start the, the financing process, which would really be just putting together the financing document, gathering information from the district around that document. And then we would come back to the board and sometime prior to pricing in order to get formal approval of a parameters resolution.
Are we, are we committed to anything? Like, what if all of a sudden somebody's like, ah, I changed my mind, I don't want to do this.
Well, for instance, like we do, you know, for the district, we've done several refundings, right? And if rates go up and the refunding doesn't work anymore. There's no, there's no commitment. The title work would be something that you would have to pay for.
Okay.
But we don't get paid unless the transaction closes. Bond counsel doesn't get paid unless the transaction closes. Moody's, we wouldn't go to unless we're pretty darn certain we're gonna go to that point, and we don't do that until we have the offering document finalized, and that's only a couple of weeks prior to pricing. So it would just be the title work essentially that you'd be out.
I just wanted that clarity that.
Sure.
You're able to operate on a thumbs up and not a formal.
Yep.
Vote.
Yep.
Okay. Any further, that was an excellent presentation, by the way.
Thanks.
Back by.
More of an internal question. Has anybody been, this is mill levy override dollars. Has anybody been talking to the oversight committee about this?
Yep, we did, we did do a presentation with the oversight committee. We've done a couple. We presented on the concept of a COP. In between that meeting and the next meeting, we sought out legal counsel about if we would need to do a plan amendment. In which case, uh, legal counsel said, no, we didn't. This is in complete alignment with the ballot question. So then we went back to the mill levy oversight committee and said, okay, now let's, uh, now we know that. And went through the presentation. Obviously, there's no vote or anything for them, because there is no plan amendment. I don't know if, I don't remember if there was a board member in the room. It seemed to have really, uh, positive support. From the, from the MLOOC, but yeah, we did present it a couple of times.
And what do you go, go ahead.
To those meetings?
Yes.
I, I can absolut, whenever we have the meetings, yeah, I can, I can look those up and send those.
I, I'd just be interested in reading minutes.
Sure.
Thanks.
Of course.
And when is, uh, the board meeting or the MLO Oversight Committee meeting again?
We'll just test.
With this as a.
We just, we just had one last night.
Last night.
With this as, uh, the topic of conversation, given the information you got for last night's meeting. When's the next one? In two weeks?
We, it's not until the end of November. There wasn't an expectation from the MLOOC to come back and present. We did, we did say, once the board is, um, further along on project discussions, we will absolutely bring that back for their information. But there wasn't an ask from that committee to come back and do a, a more formal presentation. We did, we, I basically shared within the exact same presentation. I shared with, with the board around the pricing information we got from RBC and, and all of those things, so.
I, I was just more interested in the conversation that went on. I don't know if that would be reflected in the minutes or not, but I.
It might, yeah, we do record the, um, we. Webex record the, those meetings, and so I can absolutely send that out to the board.
Thank you.
That might be a little more informative than, than reading the minutes.
Thanks.
I was there and I generally, just trying to reflect back. It, it didn't seem like there was resistance.
I can't.
It didn't seem like there was resistance to the idea. Like, I don't remember at all. Anything that would be concerning for us to like, take into account based on their comments, but.
The, the one piece of clarification was the, was the, does it require a plan amendment? Once we clarified that, we presented the information, I, I think to. Director Nelson's points. I took that feedback, now I haven't gone back and listened to it a second time. I took that feedback similar to the community feedback we've heard, which is the like, why are, why are you waiting? But, but I will absolutely share those, uh, that recording with the board.
Okay. Any further comments or questions before we, uh, provide the thumbs up? Okay, thumbs up on. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation. Looks like that's it. With that, um. Most of them don't have anything else that I. Okay, there is no board meeting. There is no board meeting next week. Uh, the next thing would be now for first, a work session. That you know what's on the agenda. With that, we are officially adjourned at nine fifteen PM.
Excellent. Thank you.